And you are live.
Good morning, everybody. I haven't said that in a while on these town halls because they're typically in the evening. So, welcome if you're turning into our 11:00 AM Community Town Hall. We have two town halls today, one now for about an hour and then another at 6:30. That will include our awesome five principles, three at the elementary level and two at the secondary. And actually, 6:30 to 7:00 are going to be our elementary principles. And roughly 7:00 to 7:30 will be our secondary principles. We're going to talk primarily instruction and what the hybrid and online models look like and that type of focus. Today's 11:00 AM meeting is going to be focused on safety, health and cleanliness. And it's tied to the questions that you have been submitting to the email address communication@victorschools.org. So, I just want to say a couple of things before we start. We've received hundreds of questions on this email address. It's going to be difficult to answer every single question. However, what we've done is we reviewed every email, every question, and then put them in categories and themes, which is what I'm going to talk about this morning. We've put them into a variety of categories and themes based upon the number of questions. And they're going to be the topics that I'm going to talk about. Again, this morning will be focused on safety, health, cleanliness, some of the general principles of coming back to school. And then tonight, we're going to focus more on what it looks like in the classroom and at home in terms of learning. Now, there are some questions that we received on this website that are more building specific. Your building principals communication over the next couple of weeks. Those include school supply questions, backpack questions, building calendars, locker setup, picture day questions. I don't have the answers to all the individual building questions that you might have. That's going to be coming from your building. Some of you have already received information on that. Some will be receiving it in the next week to two weeks. And I know our buildings are working hard on this. I will address orientations and visitors to buildings today in a few minutes. I will touch on that. For those of you that have been sending eight to 10 to 15 questions in an email to me, I definitely want to validate your concerns if they're certainly legitimate. I recommend that you watch the two town halls this morning and the 6:30 PM Town Hall, either live or recorded. And then if you still have multiple questions or any questions, you're going to give me a call as superintendent so we can have a conversation and I can point you in the right direction for those answers. So, I do not want to minimize your questions. They're really important. You're going to call though 924-3252. My extension is 1400. And that's how you get ahold of me on the phone if you have multiple questions that are not answered today at a district level. Again, that's 924-3252, extension 1400. So, this is the hard part that I wanted to say before I got into actual points. Some of your questions are extremely detailed and specific and may not have an answer at this time. And I'm not talking about safety and cleanliness and health. I'm talking more about just general questions. And I guess there's a balance between some of these questions and our ability to answer them and also trying, moving through the process of having kids and adults in the buildings and working through some of these things. Again, I'm not talking about cleanliness and health. I'm talking about a lot of the other areas that we have to focus on. I may not have an answer to every question. And if I see a question that might not have an answer, I'm going to simply tell you that we're still working on those specific procedures. And most likely, answers to them would come from the building level as well. So, I'm going to start to talk about specific categories and themes. Now, our fantastic communication directors Liz and Sheri are watching. And they're going to be basically taking down the gist of my answers to these topics and questions. We're then going to review those answers and make sure they're succinct and accurate, obviously, and making sure they're clear. And then those are going to go on our frequently asked question part of the website so that it will be an expanding frequently asked questions. They'll be in categories for you to easily find them. So, the goal would be my answers from today's Town Hall as well as the 6:30 PM will be recorded. It's obviously recorded verbally, but also will be recorded in writing in terms of the gist of the answers so you can easily find them on our website. So, I want to thank Sheri and Liz for doing that. I'm also, if time, going to take some live questions from the audience through Facebook Live. I know many of you are submitting comments and questions there, but I want to go through some of the topics first. So, first and foremost, you should have received an email and a phone call that we've changed the start of the school day. We have changed that start date from September 8th, which is a Tuesday, to September 10th, which is a Thursday. So, students will not be coming to school until September 10th. That gives our staff two additional days to work through some of the logistics and the planning of the hybrid model of instruction as well as dealing with 100% online and some of the virtual learning experiences that need to be created for that first week. It also gives us plenty of time to focus and drill down into more of our safety procedures that we will need regarding COVID to make sure that we're 100% ready for when kids come to school. We did not move the date two days because we think school's not opening and we're just delaying it. That is not why we did it. We did it for the express purpose that I just said. We fully expect kids to be here on Thursday, the 10th. And in fact, we want the entire student body to be able to, who are in the hybrid model, who have not opted into 100% online model, to have a day in school either Thursday or Friday, the 10th or 11th of September, so that when we move into the weekend after September 11th, everyone has had an opportunity to experience school, know what it's like, understand the immense similarities to what they're used to and also the differences. And that gives everybody a great head start into Monday, September 14th. So, school has been shifted. We're not lessening the school days. We're shifting the conference days from October and March over to September 8th and September 9th, which means we will not have, it's actually professional development superintendent days, not conference days. So, superintendent days will be shifted. And so, we won't have those days in October and March, which means your kids will be attending school either virtually or in person on the two days of October and March. We're going to update the calendar on that. In terms of orientations, we have gone completely virtual with our orientations. I know we were going to attempt to do the junior high in-person orientation. We decided to shift that to virtual because we wanted it to be consistent with the other four buildings. So, I understand that, but we believe that's the right way to do it before school starts. And so, orientations will be virtual across the K-12 setting. Visitor and parent volunteers. We are limiting almost to nothing our visitor. So, at this point, at the start of the school year, we're not going to have visitors. We're not also having parent volunteers, which is obviously a tough blow for us. But in terms of populating the buildings and having social distancing and things that I'm going to talk about in a couple of minutes, it will not help us if we have visitors and parent volunteers in the case of physical distancing. So, we're going to start the year with no parent volunteers and no visitors unless there's certainly a situation where a parent has to come in to either pick up their child or meet with a teacher. But general visitors and parent volunteers are not going to be a part of our plan at the beginning of the school year. So, let's talk about safety and health of students and staff. There were many questions on this area. I'm going to say this, and I think, I think it really comes down to four concepts, four pillars that we are going to publicize over and over and over again. And the first one is, please don't come to school if you feel sick, right? If you feel sick, you're not coming to school. That is a huge, a huge issue and something that we have to follow as a district and as a community. And that would include symptoms like certainly a fever, a sore throat, aches and body aches, a complete change in your whole demeanor and physical ability to move around, you know, loss of smell or taste unexpectedly that's never happened before. If your child or a staff member has those types of symptoms, right? Fever, bad cough, sore throat, running, you know, rundown, feeling awful, chills, body aches, don't come to school. We can't afford to have that happen. So, we really, and I know it's difficult, but we really need you to follow the first pillar, which is stay home when feeling ill. The second is to wear masks at all times. The only exception will be mask breaks, which I'll explain in a minute. And when we're eating or drinking at lunchtime or during the day to drink some water. But all other times, students will have masks on. The one area we're looking at where students may have their masks off, but we're still finalizing this, is if we're outside in phys ed class where they have specially labeled fields that are 12 feet by 12 feet markings that have 12 feet by 12 feet markings that may allow us to have the masks off during this wide open experience as long as we are confident that the kids won't get close to the 12 feet by 12 feet. That would be ideal if we can do that in physical education when we're running around because we're going to have physical education. That has not been finalized yet. That's an area that we need to finalize very soon. And other than that, masks will be worn at all times except for breaks as well as eating and drinking. That's the second pillar. The third pillar is we need to socially distance as much as possible. So, that's why we're doing the hybrid model with somewhere between in a typical sized classroom, 11 kids and 14 kids, depending on the school and the general size of the classroom. If we're going to have more than 14 kids, it's going to be in a larger room that supports the six feet distancing. Or for a small number of cases, primarily at the secondary level, we may not have any of these. But as you know, I think people who know who do scheduling of high schools and junior high schools, there's a lot of changes that occur the last two months or two weeks, the three weeks of the school year. So, if we have any classrooms that are not capable of socially distancing six feet because they have more than 14 kids in it, and I'm not talking about 18, 19 or 20. I'm talking about 14 or 15 or 16, that we will have specially special polycarbonate desk protectors in those classrooms, which is allowed through and actually preferred by both the state ed department and the Department of Health to make sure that that separates kids. Now, that's going to be potentially a small number of classrooms at the secondary level. It may not be any classrooms. We'll have an answer to that. But we're not going to have less than six feet typical social distance and not have those polycarbonate desk protectors in the room. That doesn't mean that kids won't be closer than six feet in a classroom when they're doing instruction. Certainly, they will have their masks on. Certainly, they can get closer than six feet for specific group work. We're not going to get one to two to even three feet close. Many of the classrooms will be designed aligned in desks that are in triangle shapes that are already shaped for groups. We can get closer than six feet for a small amount of time as long as our masks are on. But typically, they will be six feet or more apart for most of the class period or the majority of the learning experience. The fourth pillar, wash our hands frequently and well. We're going to have videos on this for elementary and secondary level. And it's critically, we're going to wash our hands more. We're going to wash our hands better than we typically have. And it's one of the most important things you can do. So, four, I'm calling them pillars. I don't know if you want to call them. Four critical guidelines in terms of being able to successfully open school. But it's, don't come to school when you're ill or feeling ill. Wear a mask. Stay socially distant for the vast majority of our time. And of course, wash your hands carefully. Those four things are, you're going to hear it over and over and over again. We firmly believe that if we do those four things consistently as a community, we have a much better chance of staying open than if one or two or more of those are not done. So, I'm going to talk now specifically about masks, a little bit more about masks, and then I'm going to get into cleaning, sanitizing and disinfecting because those were significant questions on this in our email from the community. So, again, masks are going to be worn pretty much all the time. Again, they won't have them on for the breaks. Now, what is a mask break? A mask break is typically three things. One, after you take the mask off, you have to be greater than six feet apart. You have to be socially distant. Number two, you can't be moving as a student. So, we're not going to have them doing it when they're running around and walking around rooms and doing things. They have to be sitting in one spot. And third, it has to be for a definitive, small amount of time, somewhere between three and five minutes. So, a mask break is, again, socially distant, at least six feet apart for socially distance. It's not moving around in a standing, sitting or standing position and it's three to five minutes. Now, mask breaks will be more frequent at the younger levels than the older levels because of needs of our younger students. That's going to be determined by the principal and the building and the teachers in that building. So, I can't tell you how many mask breaks second grade is going to get, but I can tell you that most likely, they'll be more frequent than the 11th graders. And we're going to do it safely and do it in a way like I just said that outlines those three concepts. There are two types of situations where kids might not wear masks. One is a medical excuse. And not only is there a medical excuse, but there is a form that we're going to be sending out to parents who are requesting a medical excuse for wearing a mask. That form needs to be completed as well as a doctor's note. And we have more, you know, again, we'll continue to talk about that. But it's a form that needs to be filled out and a doctor's note. And then the school and the doctor would work together to make the final decision on if the child cannot physically wear a mask, which is the case for a very small number of our kids. If that happens, then we're going to do a couple of things. We're going to focus on socially distancing kids who are in that situation, but still a part of the classroom. We don't want to ostracize any kids. We're also going to most likely overprotect people that are in settings with those individuals, which might be double masks for some people or different PPE equipment that we're going to use. But we're, we're going to make sure that everybody's safe, but we understand there's a small amount of kids that are not able to wear that, but that's through a medical doctor approved through our doctor. The other type of situation is somebody just not wearing the mask. It's not an emotional issue. It's not a physical issue that can't be worked on. It's just refusal to wear the mask. That is going to be worked on, as I like to say, a teachable moment. That means that we're going to talk to the child. We're going to figure out why they're not wearing the mask. And then we're going to try to explain the importance of it and talk to him or her about why it's critical and what we need to do to make sure he or she is wearing the mask. If it continues, we're going to call parents and make sure they understand that your child needs to wear a mask. And then if it happens again, there's, and there's a pattern over, over a period of time of this happening, unfortunately, or actually for the well-being of everyone, we're going to shift that child to the 100% online model because we can't have kids who don't have a medical excuse not wearing masks. And obviously, staff members are expected to wear masks as well. The only difference around that is that for instructional purposes, as long as they're socially distant, we may have some staff members taking the mask off because of the professional responsibilities they're doing. It depends on the kids and the makeup of the health situation in the classroom and also under the principal's discretion around that. So, in terms of masks, we've heard a lot of things too that were about what's allowed and what's not allowed. I could tell you the easiest thing to say is to wear the cloth mask, right? These masks right here, this is an orange one. I don't know why, but I know it should be blue. I apologize. Just the cloth mask, we're going to have thousands of them that we're going to give to students and staff who need it. Right now, we're not allowing, I know there was some talk before, gators are not allowed through the health department. Bandanas are not allowed. We will ask you to put on a school mask if those items are worn. So, please be aware of that. Just purchase the cloth mask or allow us to give your child the mask because that's our job. We're not going to not have a kid attend school because they don't have a mask. We will make sure that they have those masks. Just looking at my notes here around masks, I think that's all I have here. Let's talk a little bit about cleaning, sanitizing, disinfecting. Lots of questions around these three items. Remember, somehow Sheri and Liz are listening to this and taking down the gist of what I'm saying. We're going to refine those notes and make sure they're public on our reopening website. So, you'll have answers. My answers will be on, in terms of the form of questions and answers on the frequently asked question sheet as we move forward. So, before kids and staff arrive, every night, we're going to be what's called cleaning, sanitizing and disinfecting our rooms. It's really important. It's going to happen every night. We have a night crew that has been expanded to some degree based upon some shifts we're doing across buildings. Their job is going to be critical and we're going to disinfect, clean and sanitize everything at night. So, in the morning, when the first person arrives, it's a brand new day and a brand new building in terms of cleanliness. Then, what we're going to do is while staff is there, we have hired additional cleaners, approximately the equivalent of eight part-time cleaners. And it's either going to be those eight or some type of hybrid where we also contract out with an organization to support the cleaning if we need to, but we're going to have that level of cleaning. From an outside the classroom standpoint, they're responsible for continuing to disinfect and clean high-touch areas in the building, which include bathrooms. And multiple times, that could be two times a day, that could be three times a day. And they're certainly available for situations where they have to clean it right away because there was an emergency or a fast death curve. So, those high-touch areas are going to be cleaned multiple times. And in the classroom, we're looking at our teachers and staff having a disinfectant spray that we have over the last two days, I believe we have a pretty solid choice that kills the virus, that will be spread, that is sprayed onto desks and dries within three to four minutes, is not sticky. And students, we may have students just not touch their desks when they transfer into school. This is especially at the secondary level when we all have three minutes between class periods. But that will be, they'll be, teachers will be disinfecting high-touch areas in a classroom when kids shift and move. And we've figured out a way to do this, we believe, in a quick way that doesn't have teachers having to wipe documents or desks off. So, that's going to occur as well as, again, high-touch areas in the classroom the teacher can disinfect. So, if we have an emergency in the classroom in terms of a cleaning need or if something happens where COVID is diagnosed in an area, that's a whole different ballgame. That's where we come in and disinfect, clean and remove people from that area. Certainly, if there's a spill or some type of mess that we need to clean up in a classroom, we'll take care of that right away, which is another advantage to having those additional cleaners available. In addition to that, the vast majority of our elementary students are eating in their classrooms. It's more of a hybrid model in terms of some in the cafeteria, although we're keeping that at a minimal number and some in the classrooms at the secondary level. So, classrooms will need to be cleaned again and disinfected to some degree with the high-touch areas after lunch. So, our custodians will help with that as well. We're going to have larger garbage cans in classroom to accommodate the garbage. I'm going to talk about lunch in itself in a little bit, a couple of minutes actually. But there'll be significant cleaning going on during that period of time. Let's see if I missed anything. Chromebooks, I'm going to get to in a second. We'll talk about that. Teacher manipulatives, those are the things, you know, that you typically would pass out to our classrooms, whether it's at the elementary level or the secondary level. We're going to primarily keep those attached to a child as much as we can so that we're not sharing those materials. If we are sharing them because of secondary classes that have multiple classes coming in and it's just not enough, then again, that'll be something that the staff member or teacher would quickly spray, disinfect, dry in two to three minutes. And then the next person would use it. But really, what we're trying to do is minimize the use of manipulatives that are shared. And actually, we're going to get into that when I talk about technology and computers because we have a plan for that as well. Pick up and drop off, again, we're having another Town Hall at 6:30 PM. So, part of what we're going to talk about at 6:30 along with the instruction that's going to happen in classrooms is going to be the pick up and drop off procedure. So, I'll have more information on that tonight. And again, we're going to tape those answers. We're not significantly changing the times of school in any way. Again, the principals will talk about that tonight. It's more giving some leeway around time to drop off students if you're dropping off by car and certainly for our buses. We have an opt-out form that's going to be up through Friday if you want to opt out of bus transportation, either to school, from school or both. And so, that's still available. We have a significant number of parents who've done that. I've said multiple times that we need to continue to work on our, you know, management of the car areas and where we're going to be dropping kids off in front of buildings and through the facilities because that will be a logjam. We already know it is before this. So, we're going to really try to work on that, but we need your patience around it. And we are going to extend some time for kids to be dropped off, especially at the beginning of the year. We're trying to get to use to these traffic patterns. But I'm going to talk more about pick up and drop off tonight. Classroom ventilation is very important. The focus around ventilation is increasing fresh air as much as possible. So, I'm going to say something and I have a change from what I said to the staff on Monday, I believe. So, here's the facts. Three of our buildings have what's called 100% airflow from the outside that's then quickly recirculated back outside. So, it comes from the outside, it's circulated in and it's circulated outside. It's a great process. That would be the primary building, the junior high school and the high school. So, those buildings have circulated air that is at a, basically 100% level in terms of going in and out. And then it, and the vents are completely separated from another so we're not pulling in the air that just came out of the classrooms. That's a huge help to those classrooms. In the early childhood building and the intermediate building, we don't have the 100% ventilation. We have a decent amount, but not 100%. So, two things that we've done for that, those buildings, is we've added 20% more outside air that's flowing into those two buildings, all right, which is a significant amount. And it's through the air dampers that we're utilizing. These are the two buildings. We're also installing those MERV filters, not in every, it's a process. So, we're not able to get every filter at the beginning. But we are putting in those filters in many of our areas where we're able to that doesn't slow down the air enough to where it actually hurts us rather than helps us. So, the two ways that we're really combating the virus in terms of ventilation in those two buildings, early childhood and the intermediate building are adding increased outside air by 20% and then putting in the MERV filters in a significant amount of areas to which are more thicker and are able to block more things, which is good for the safety and health of all of us. In addition, I am shifting a topic that we talked about on Monday. We are going to allow and recommend that classrooms crack open and open their windows as much as we can, not wide open completely, but cracked open. I don't want to spend 10 minutes on windows and air because there is, you know, there's give and take around it. You know, the good news is that adds fresh air, especially the buildings like the ECS and the intermediate building. It also hopefully cools them down when you're on that second floor in some of our buildings where we have really hot days. We don't want to necessarily open windows wide open and have things blowing around because that blows the droplets around if somebody had the COVID virus. However, the benefits of cracking open windows, opening them to some degree is better than not. So, I did say on Monday with the staff, we're not going to have open windows. So, we did a little more research on that, checked with our Department of Health and we are able to do that. So, we are going to do that. So, we're going to put that in writing. Right now, fans are not allowed however, because fans contribute so much to movement of air that it becomes a health risk if anybody had the actual virus and droplets were spread around. So, yes to windows, no to fans. Lunch and specials. We're going to talk more about special area classes, 6:30 tonight at both the secondary and the elementary level. They're going to give a quick update on art, music and physical education. Already said that we're going to have all three, which is great news. They're part of the schedule in both K-6 and 712. Already said that phys ed will be outside as much as possible. And we are going to make a final decision on mask wearing for outside for phys ed classes as soon as we're able to. We'd like to be able to take them off on the 12 feet by 12 feet. But we're going to have more information on special area classes at 6:30. In terms of lunch, there's been a lot of questions around lunch. Let me paraphrase some, some talking points around that. Sorry about that. Sorry about that. So we're gonna offer a hot entree and a cold entree. Uh, all items will be pre-wrapped or packaged. Students will come through the line, pick up their meal, and then head back to their designated eating areas, which at the elementary levels are primarily classrooms, uh, where they're gonna be socially distant. Uh, secondary level will be either lunchroom or classroom. If we're gonna have people in the lunchroom, here's an example. We may need some kids in the lunchroom at the junior high. We're not gonna have more than fifty students in a, in the lunchroom. Now, we know that we can keep six feet by six feet in the cafeteria in the junior high with seventy-five students in there. We're not even gonna go there, we're gonna go fifty at the max. We may not even have fifty. We're gonna spread them out significantly and then others, but we need to do that to fill, to allow for space for our students, uh, in the classroom to eat lunch. Um, there is a whole schedule for students, uh, who are gonna be a hundred percent online that our director of food services working on. She's also collecting the names of families and the number of students that are planning to participate. This will help with forecasting and development of the lunches. The information's being collected via survey that was distributed to the families two weeks ago. And we're expecting, uh, those surveys to be completed by Friday. As of right now, we're gonna be offering pickup two days a week for curbside lunches from the senior high, uh, concession stand by the turf field. Uh, she is, Alex, our director of facilities, is tentatively scheduling that at this time. Uh, transportation will again assist between morning and afternoon noon runs if there are families who do not have transportation or cannot leave their homes in terms of, uh, uh, food that is served to families. Um, we're not positive about the transportation, but we're gonna try to work that out. Um, the families that will use an online ordering system that will be implemented, which they will be ordering a week ahead of time. The ordering system will be used for all meal orders onsite and offsite. This is a moving target. This is somewhat tentative, but that's our general plan for lunches. Uh, there will be significant washing of hand protocols before kids eat and then washing hands after they eat. Specific ways the kids will walk through the classroom to, uh, drop their food trays and other items, uh, off after they eat as well as to pick them up. And like I said earlier, we're going to, um, clean those rooms. To some, we're gonna disinfect any areas that were used by the kids for lunch, let's say that. Clean them as best we can and certainly, um, you know, not leave crumbs and other items in the classroom for what happens afterwards in terms of learning. So that's a quick update on lunch. Are we doing it on time here? It's eleven thirty-four. I'm gonna get through some more questions and then I'm actually gonna try this. Uh, I'm going to go into, uh, Facebook Live and a Google Doc and try to answer questions that you have as many as we can. Um, so keep those questions coming. Again, I can't guarantee we're gonna answer everyone, especially this afternoon. Uh, but we will get to as many as possible. And if we, if you ask questions, they're gonna be answered through our frequently asked question page that we're developing by Friday. We're gonna point you in that direction as well. We are going to have recess at the elementary level. Um, we're gonna try to go outside and maximize that time. Masks will be worn, uh, by our students at the elementary level who do go to recess. Now, space is a premium. And so this is where it gets a little tricky. You're gonna get building level expectations around this. There are certain buildings that may not be able to use the playground because it's either being built right now or it's not, you know, in a situation where we're, we feel safe that can be wiped down and, and really, um, utilize social distance wise, uh, by the students. Um, and that could be an issue in the intermediate school. No fault of the intermediate school, just by the spacing and the amount of kids in there as well as the playground. We may have, and this will be updated by our primary and early childhood school, we may have the ability, at least at the primary school, to use the playground in a very structured way. Um, we're not sure. What we are sure of, uh, is that we will have recess outside as much as we can and that we're gonna be doing different things. Kids will be able to be active but have their masks on at all times. You'll be getting more information from your buildings regarding recess at the elementary level. Uh, so let's move into health and wellness. Uh, I've said this a few times, but I'm gonna reiterate the process we're using for students and staff of the time, uh, they feel sick to the time we are, someone is potentially testing that child or staff member for COVID in quarantine situations. I'm gonna run through that now, uh, not run through it, but be specific around it. And I will tell you that there is going to be a flow chart online. Uh, again, our goal is to have that by the end of this week. Uh, that really explains this process from the beginning to the end in a very coherent way that you can access in our reopening page. Uh, many districts are doing this and it's under the supervision of our doctor who is finalizing the, is finalizing what the flow chart looks like. But I'm gonna verbally explain it to you. So, uh, it starts with a screening tool that we're using. So parents and children, parents are expected to fill out a health screening, uh, online page that will be through an app that will have specific directions on how to do, and it's pretty simple. Um, we're gonna make sure that gets to you so you have some practice with it and understand how to use it. It should take about twenty seconds to fill out. And it's basically yes or no questions to fever and symptoms, right? Some of those symptoms that fever, basically the symptoms that I talked about earlier, whether it's, uh, fever, whether it's sore throat, aches and pains and chills. Um, you know, significant headache and feeling, uh, basically out of it, uh, that is completely different than a typical migraine or something of that nature. Uh, those will be on there. We're gonna ask parents to be honest, going back to our first pillar. We don't want staff or students coming to school in person when they're feeling ill. That will be the number one thing that derails us in terms of being able to, to stay open effectively. So you fill the screening out, uh, it's electronically sent to each building. Uh, buildings check those screening forms in the, uh, as soon as possible. That's why they have to be done. And we're gonna check for anybody who marks yes to any of those symptoms or anybody who doesn't fill them out. Those individual students will be called down as soon as possible and checked out, uh, with the nurse. If it's somebody who, uh, put yes to any symptoms, because remember, the focus is if you're gonna put yes to any of those symptoms, you stay home. Um, or it's gonna be checked out if somebody didn't do it, uh, right, either in the classroom or again, at the main office or possibly the nurse's office. But we're gonna be checking those every morning and we're developing a process to, to go through those. It's a heck of a lot easier, uh, for our staff if everybody fills out the forms. What we don't wanna have to do is chase around two hundred people who didn't fill out their forms because that puts us on the staff to try to do that. So as part of that first pillar of don't come to school sick with illness symptoms, please fill out those screening forms. Now, if you come to school and start not, and not feel well and start to have some of those symptoms, we're certainly gonna train our teachers and make sure our teachers are, teachers and staff are aware of what those symptoms are. A student would go to the nurse's office to, um, to be checked out by our, our outstanding nurses. Um, at that time, the nurse would make a determination, uh, whether the child needs to just rest for a little bit or go back to class, or the symptoms are se- are enough to where the nurse recommends that child go home and go see their pediatrician. Uh, that's gonna be decided. There's two rooms now in our nurse's office, one for kids who have COVID-like symptoms and one for other, uh, health-related, uh, needs. That's gonna be, uh, you know, followed completely in terms of using those two different rooms. So if a child is having the, uh, having symptoms of illness, again, the nurse is gonna make that professional judgment. We're gonna pack that nurse a hundred percent. And if the nurse calls you to have your child go home, then we would need you to pick up your child, take your child home. And it will be highly recommended that your child go see his or her pediatrician. Uh, we have three scenarios for students when that happens. Uh, the first is your doctor looks at your, the doctor looks at your child, says they're fine, writes a quick note and the next day, your child's back in school because they have a clearance from their medical doctor saying it's appropriate for your child to be in school. That's the one that, um, is the most, most likely prevalent. A second one would be the physician feels like the symptoms are, are enough relationship to COVID to where the physician recommends testing. At that point, we would follow the doctor's direction and, uh, would highly recommend that your child be tested for COVID. We're working on getting more information to you as a community around where the testing locations are and the timeframe it takes for those tests to occur. Um, and your child would be tested and would need to stay at home until the test results are present, either negative or positive. If your child does not go to the doctor when it's recommended by our nurse or doesn't get tested when it's recommended by the doctor, we are not allowed to have your child enter school for at least ten days until, uh, we know that, um, those particular symptoms were not related to COVID or COVID would be out of the system. And that would be a final decision by, uh, the pediatrician in conjunction with our nurse. Uh, if a child tests positive, uh, for COVID during the testing process, then we have a, then we would be finding that out most likely by the department of health because then the testing site, uh, informs the Ontario County of Health. And then we are under the direction of the Ontario County of Health. We're not under the direction of our nurse. We're not under the direction of our principals. Uh, we're not even under the direction technically of your children's physician. It's now the department of health that makes two decisions. A, when does your child come back after testing positive for COVID? B, who gets quarantined from the building? We don't decide those things. I can tell you that they're gonna be asking us for very specific information around who your child was around, uh, when they were around them, whether they were wearing masks and how socially distant they were. I do know that one of the advantages of following those, uh, those four pillars of doc coming to school when you're sick, wearing a mask, uh, ninety-nine percent of the time, staying socially distant and washing your hands. If you're socially distant and wearing a mask, uh, in a classroom where somebody contract, contracts COVID, then there's a much higher likelihood that you will not have to be quarantined versus classrooms and areas where students are around each other without masks on them and not socially distant. It could be the difference between large numbers of people being quarantined and a very small numbers of people being quarantined. Again, we don't make that decision on who's being quarantined. The department of health does. I know there's questions on are we gonna find out who has COVID and when they have COVID. Uh, we have certain, certainly we have, uh, FERBA laws as well as HIPAA laws around privacy. Um, so we will find out, uh, who gets, uh, COVID or who has COVID in our dis- in our building. At least the administration of the building and myself and the nurse, uh, will know if somebody has it in our district. Um, we'll certainly know who it is. Um, and then we need to work on communication protocols with you as a community, uh, to be cognizant of, you know, being transparent around what we're doing and, but also being cognizant of, uh, privacy issues for our family. So I'm not specifically answering who's gonna know what. Uh, we, I will tell you obviously that if you were, um, in proximity to the person who has COVID, you would be contacted either by the health department or somebody that's, uh, contracts out with the health department, uh, to ask you some questions. Um, and, and then the health department would make a decision on whether you need to be quarantined or not. So that's gonna be done in a much more succinct way on this, uh, flow chart that we're creating. Um, but really, that's the most specific I can give you in terms of the process we're utilizing. And we're hopeful that, uh, we don't have to utilize it very often, but we have a process and we're continuing to reflect on it. In terms of communication, I will get back to you with more specific information on that. I'm gonna move to, let's see, the next topics. I'll give you the next few topics and then I'm gonna go to questions for, for a while. Uh, let's see, technology is a big topic. I wanna talk a little bit about clubs and extracurricular events and then I wanna talk about daycare options. And I wanna talk about our athletic fields. Um, so, and I remember tonight at six thirty is gonna be a much more specific discussion on online and in-person learning practices, uh, the before and after school start date. Um, I'm also gonna touch on special education, uh, tonight. Sorry, it's not tomorrow night, tonight at six thirty. Uh, in terms of technology, so this is something that's really important. We've, we're changing the way we utilize technology starting in September than we did in May and June. Right? We have a, a concept now where we want you, your children, to bring their device into school. Now, there's two ways you can have that device. It can be one from your home, right? That's a tablet or a laptop or a Chromebook, right? We're not talking about cell phones and other devices. Basically, it's either a tablet, um, a Chromebook or a laptop that you feel as parents are able to be transported back and forth between school and home. Okay? Or you feel as a family, you don't have enough of those devices to spread them out amongst your kids and your, the adults during the day. So you're requesting additional Chromebooks from the school. We have over a thousand requests for Chromebooks at this time. Uh, the district is gonna try our best to accommodate those requests. There is a limited number of Chromebooks and there is a possibility we'll not be able to honor every single one of those requests. Um, but there's also gonna be, it's important to know that, that, uh, since we're distributing the Chromebooks out to students, there will not be Chromebooks for the students to use in school unless there's an emergency. Therefore, if your child is issued the Chromebook, they'll, they're gonna need to bring it in school on the days they're in session. If your child's not assigned a Chromebook and you're gonna bring one from home, they, they need to bring that when school is in session, back and forth. We need to get into that habit of utilizing, uh, almost, you know, in a way, it's similar to a one-to-one, uh, inner, uh, device process that many districts are using, where we have this process of bringing Chromebooks, laptops or tablets back and forth. We have a board policy around, uh, bring your own devices. Uh, and information regarding the bring your own device policy is posted on the district technology page on our website. So you can go there for more information. We do encourage students that have their own device, whether it's a Chromebook, laptop or iPad, um, to bring it to school for instructional purposes. That's what I'm trying to say. Because we wanna get away from, and this is first and foremost, a safety issue. We know that if we can distribute these Chromebooks and have kids bringing them back and forth, similar to their school items they bring back and forth every day when they're in school, then we don't have to have a bunch of kids and adults grabbing computers and Chromebooks off of carts, which significantly increases safety risks around spreading the virus. When we keep these Chromebooks in our own students' hands, we're not sharing the devices. It's a huge advantage, uh, to that first four pillars where we're trying to not be sick and maintain social distance, uh, keep our masks on and wash our hands. We have less likelihood that the virus would spread by not sharing these devices. So that's a lot of the main reasons for doing it. It also breeds familiarity with our students, so they're using the same device over and over again. We understand that as a family of even two, three or four kids, if you only have two or three devices in your home, we understand that you may need more Chromebooks, which is why you need to fill out that survey. It's still open. Um, and if you have any issues, uh, where to find that survey, please go to our website. Uh, you should be able to find it there. It's very easy to find. Uh, let's see, we're gonna publicize at a later date when Chromebook pickup is for those parents who have requested one. Uh, we have a specific plan and process for, for the ability for you to take, pick up your Chromebooks before school starts. So we're gonna have specific information on that in the near future. The thing, we don't have a lot of, uh, uh, ability to order, uh, you know, hundreds of our hotspots. They are significantly expensive. We have ordered fifty of them from Wayne Finger Lakes Bocce's. We distributed forty hotspots in the spring for families that did not have internet access. Um, so that's something that, uh, we're continuing to look at. But if you have wireless at your house, you do not need a hotspot. And majority, the vast majority of our homes have wireless technology. So, uh, and wireless capabilities. We'd ask you if you have wireless not to order additional hotspots. Those are really for families that have no internet access in their homes. So that's an update on technology. I wanted to make sure you had that. This will also be updated in our frequently asked questions as part of our reopening plan. And there's an actual devoted technology page on our website that, uh, you can go to. Um, clubs and extracurricular events. We're a big fan of clubs and extracurricular events. I've already had conversations with our marching band. They're a huge piece to our district. Um, right now, we're holding off on having clubs and extracurricular activities at the beginning of the year. I will tell you the philosophy we have right now. We wanna give the school year a start of at least a couple of weeks to see how things go. go. And then we want to transition into clubs and extracurricular activities if it's safe to do so. It may involve social distancing. It may involve pa- you know, groups meeting partially, but we are very focused on as long as uh the, the Ontario Health Department allows it and we're able to do so that we transform back into clubs and extracurricular activities uh through the month of September. All right? Now that could change based upon what happens and we certainly have to be ready for that, but that is our focus. Right now there is no activity bus run. Uh, so, and that is not planned at this point to be reinstated based upon uh our ability to do so. So if we do have extracurricular activities and clubs, we need to be prepared that there might not be transportation by us for an activity period uh afterwards, although that's something we will continue to look at. Um, let's see here. Daycare options, a, a great shout out to our Victor Teachers Association and all the daycare providers out there. Um, they've been meeting already a- with the town of Victor and Farmington on possibilities to add, to figure out ways to get a, a pretty large group of, of children daycare during the day, obviously, uh, to support whether it's our staff with kids or community members with kids. This is for families in the hybrid model, um, who are struggling with daycare uh on days that their kids are home. Uh, so that, there's going to be more, there's been a survey that has been sent out through our listserv today. Uh, we're asking for a somewhat quick turnaround between today and Friday for families who, it's a really simple two to three question survey on daycare. We're asking for uh, again, some turnaround, a quick turnaround to Friday afternoon on that so that we can plan for the number of families uh that potentially need daycare. We're utilizing uh our groups across this uh this town and area to support it and then we're going to have more information as soon as we can on the specifics on how to apply for it, but it might be in a good way, a game changer for many of our families to support that hybrid model and students attending school in that model. Fields, uh, lots of questions around our athletic fields. They're closed right now. Um, the reason they're closed is because we're putting our complete attention uh towards the reopening of school. Uh, we're concerned that if we allowed our athletic fields to be used at this point for youth sports, that A, uh, we have to hire people to actually supervise it from the district according to state regulations and we don't have the people or the money to do that at this moment in August and July. And two, if uh, if there is a, some positive cases in COVID in August on our fields right before school starts, that could jeopardize the start of school and um the risk at this boi- point doesn't outweigh the reward. This doesn't mean we don't want to be a community school district and utilize our fields for community youth, but at least similar to clubs and activities, we're starting the month off in September, not opening the fields unless it's for school-related experiences like phys ed and some other areas. Uh, we are going to, I'm going to, along with our Director of Health, Phys Ed and Athletics, having a meeting very soon, probably in the next two to three weeks with our youth leaders uh around athletics who are really important to us and part of our community and part of the fabric of what makes Victor such a great place. We're going to be meeting with them in early to mid-September at the latest, going over some plans and specifics around how to potentially utilize our fields and then have more information for you uh as we move forward on that. So that's fields. Uh, so I tried to talk about obviously the opening of school, uh orientations and visitors, safety and health, uh ventilation, mask wearing, disinfecting. Uh, we're going to talk about pickup and drop off tonight along with, again, instructional practices and the general look of a hybrid model versus a hundred, hundred percent online tonight with the principals from 6:30 to 7:30. Today we talked a little bit about lunch, specials, recess at the elementary level. Uh, we talked a lot about recognizing illness and what to, what we're going to do in terms of our process when either staff or students are feeling symptoms of illness, both before they come to school, which is really important not to come to school if you have those symptoms. And then what happens if you're in school when that happens? Uh, talked uh pretty significantly about technology and that critical change for next fall or this fall coming up in a few weeks, I'll say, uh, which is that we're going to try to either bring our own device as a student or you're going to request a Chromebook and we're not going to have large amounts of Chromebooks being utilized from carts, which could really significantly increase safety concerns uh in our building. And we believe this one-to-one device concept is the 21st century and what we need to be doing and moving forward with the use of technology to improve our teaching practice. And uh it would be a good pattern and ritual uh to get used to as we move forward. So it's 11:56. I'm going to take some of your questions uh as we move forward. I want to remind everyone, if I talked about, if I, if I, if I see a question that I already answered, I'm probably not going to say it, uh, although I might. Uh, and we're going to record these answers by Friday so that you're going to have these frequently asked questions. So I'm just going to go around. I've not seen these, obviously. Uh, when you opt out for virtual, is it the same teacher that it would be for the hybrid schedule? I'm going to get to that at 6:30 tonight. Our teach, our principals will talk about that. Um, if I send my child and later on need to pull them for a medical reason, can I? Of course. Uh, if your child has a medical excuse that occurs during the school year, it's like any other school year, the medical excuse, that's a legitimate medical, medical excuse uh overrides everything. Um, and we follow that procedure. Do kids with asthma get more mask breaks? Um, yes, certainly if a child needs more mask breaks because of their breathing patterns, yes, of course, they would get more mask breaks. Uh, I trust our nurses and our health department to work with our principals and teachers around that. I haven't seen anything about music at school. Well, music lessons, instruments still be happening. Uh, we will have music at school, K-12. We're going to talk more about that uh at 6:30 tonight. Since all orientations are virtual, when will the dates and links be provided? Uh, I don't have that answer, but I know that would be extremely, very soon. I know our buildings are providing information on their own websites that are tied to district information and they're sending out uh materials. Uh, we can get an answer for that tonight uh from our principals. Which color group attends the first Wednesday to 16th? Uh, that's a great question. I don't have that answer. We should be able to answer that at 6:30. I will tell you this, on um, on Thursday, September 10th, we're going to have our blue group come to school and then we're going to do a little bit different that way because we're going to go to school two days, right? The 10th and the 11th. The blue group will go the 10th. The gold group will go the 11th, so that every child in the hybrid model will attend school that first week of school. Then we're going to go into the process. We talked about the schedule that we had set starting the 14th, right? Which is um, blue and gold, two days each. And then there's going to be schedules for this put up very soon around which weeks on Wednesdays the blue or gold group will attend. We can even uh potentially ask that question of our principals uh this evening. Um, we need clarification on actual schedule for Wednesday instruction. We'll give that tonight. What is lunch going to look like in detail? Where are they eating, classroom or cafeteria? Uh, I explained that. Uh, you'll see my answers on the frequently asked question page, so you can refer to that. Uh, can you please let us know approximately how many families have opted to select online only? Uh, I did not check, I checked it this morning actually and we had roughly, again, a, and this is a great point, you have until midnight tonight to opt into 100% online learning. Uh, that is why uh we're doing these presentations today and this evening. Uh, I checked it this morning, there was roughly 420 families, K-12, which is a little less than 10% of our body at this point, which means that right now a little more than 90% are planning on coming in the hybrid model. Uh, can we get more information on what the 100% online school looks like? Yep, tonight at 6:30. Uh, there's a specific question with the intermediate school. We'll get to at some other point and it'll probably be more at the building level. Um, would like to know why the children need to keep masks on in the classrooms, which is most likely where they will spend all of their day with no AC, no open windows and no fans when they would be spaced six feet apart. And I think that is the CDC protocol. Sounds more like torture. Well, I appreciate the question uh and the clarity around that question. It's actually is the guidance from the CDC for schools is to wear masks at all times as well as maintain social distancing. Uh, the guidance also does say that if you're not going to be able to maintain social distancing uh over a period of time, that's extensive to put Plexi, uh, ex- not Plexi, Plexiglas polycarbonate uh in the classrooms. Like I said, what happened in a small number of our secondary classrooms. The main reason is that um we're going to give kids mask breaks, so they're going to get breaks more frequently at the elementary level. We are going to open up windows, so that's been a change and I clarify, I'll continue to clarify that. And if we end up having cases of COVID in our building, there's significantly less chance of your child or a staff member being uh quarantined if they're wearing masks versus not wearing masks, which means there's significantly less chance for, from a scientific viewpoint that they're going to get COVID than if they weren't wearing masks. That's why we're going to have kids wear masks uh at all times other than eating, drinking or um during mask breaks. It doesn't guarantee us that a child doing everything they're supposed to be doing won't get COVID or a staff member. I'm not saying that. I'm saying that mask wearing is critical and it helps our population in terms of quarantine, we think. It also doesn't mean a child, a child could get quarantined if they had a mask on. I uh, I want you to be aware of that. That's up to the health department, but I know it increases our chances of not having to do it. Um, what is the protocol for students within a classroom that COVID has been diagnosed? Especially at the primary level when they are spending most of their time in the same room. Uh, again, this is a tricky concept. I've tried to explain it. Uh, it's 12:02, by the way. I'm going to keep going for those of you that want to stay on with me. Uh, I'm going to try to answer as many of these questions as I can. I won't get to every one, um, but I'm going to stay on for a while. I know that I said it would be till 12, but if you, if you need to do something else, certainly do so. I'll keep answering questions uh as, for, for, for a period of time. So the protocol is that if a child or a staff member in a primary classroom does get COVID, then the health department will notify us. We will notify the health department of who was sitting where, when they were together, how they were together during the school day. The parents of that child or staff member will be notified. Will, will we ask questions regarding who they've had contact with outside of school? Those individuals, uh, if there's any concern by the health department around uh closeness or contact, uh, would be contacted by the health department. That doesn't mean they will be quarantined by the health department, but they may be asked questions by them. If they are quarantined, it would be decided by the health department. And this leads to what I just said about masks. We believe there's less of a chance to be quarantined, not a completely zero chance, but less of a chance if we're socially distant and have masks on in those areas. So it's a case-by-case determination. There is no hard and fast rule that says schools will completely close down if there's one COVID case or classrooms will close down or buildings will close down. That's not the case. It depended on the individual situation and how that looks and how many situations we're having at one time. I could tell you there's some significant cleaning that will be done in that classroom. We would move uh the students out of there for at least 24 hours, potentially longer uh and ship some things um to put, to deep clean the room at a level that is necessary, um, uh, which we are doing, to be honest with you, every evening anyway, which is a good thing, but we would actually do some additional cleaning there. Um, I would like to know if a child truly is not able to handle being in school with the masks, no touching, literally no physical interaction with anyone. Can they be switched out to the online only? If not, that were the case with any child of mine, I would take them out no matter what the rule is. Their mental health matters. It's already been affected badly by all of this. So I think the question is if a child's not able to handle it uh physically or emotionally uh for various reasons and you as parents feel like um you want to tell, take your kid and move them to 100% online model, uh, after they've tried the in-person model, what happens? I've been telling people that we're really hoping that people stay uh hybrid for 10 to 13 weeks, similar to the, the expectations of kids who are 100% online, need to stay online for 10 to 13 weeks, then make a new decision. Um, however, we get it that there's situations on an individual basis that change. So if there's families on an individual basis that want to move their child from a hybrid to online, it would be a conversation with the principal, uh, the teacher, and we would have to communicate that, but that is definitely possible if it's a medical reason. So I'm saying that it is possible to switch earlier than 10 weeks. Uh, we want, want to have a discussion with you regarding that certainly. Be honest with you, if you're going to keep your kids 100% online, you know, we're, that's not our, we don't have control over that. Um, you do. Um, and so we get it, uh, but we want to have conversations. We want the principal involved in that decision and certainly with the medical situation that trumps anything. Kids who are quarantined for two weeks or out sick will go right online. That's where the one advantage to this is we're going to have that 100% online option. So um, two things we're looking at, hopefully, uh, one is if you're sick and healthy enough to work, you can get the job done at home, which is a completely different model than in previous years, right? Because you'll have access to Google Classroom. We're going to talk about that tonight. Secondly, I, I, you know, a superintendent ever, you know, I've never been a huge fan of snow days. I mean, because of missing school, certainly I'm a fan of it for safety. Uh, this is an opportunity to have school when we typically would have a snow day and I know the students would love that, uh, but that is something we're looking at as well. Well, uh, again, some questions around what the virtual will look like. We're going to talk about that uh tonight. Can we see a picture of what some classrooms will look like? Music, RPE? Yes, that's a great point. Uh, Sherry and Liz, if you're listening, could you please highlight that one? Uh, that is definitely something we can put on our website and would want to show all of you. Uh, have all the guidelines been published publicly? There are alternative caregivers, grandparents, for example, who are primarily responsible for carrying out these guidelines. Um, 90% of what I've said is in our reopening plan that's on our website. Um, as, so they are published publicly. Like I said earlier, we're going to refine some of that information, add some of the information from my answers this morning as well as our principals discussion tonight. And that will be updated by Friday on the website, which is public. Um, yeah, again, questions around virtual learning, virtual days. Can students go outside for mask breaks? That's going to be a building level decision. Um, you know, we, I don't have a hard and fast answer to that one. Uh, if the FAQ page won't be ready until Friday and there are still so many questions that the district doesn't have answers to yet, are we expected to make a decision for our children about attending school or going 100% virtual? As I said, uh, 6:30 to 7:30, we're going to explore those to, that specific topic to the best we can in terms of the information we have right now. Um, you are, you will be getting that information and, and we have to make a decision by midnight tonight for tomorrow morning because our teachers and leadership have to plan for the online learners as well as the hybrid learners and the makeup of those groups. So at that point, uh, that would be your, uh, you know, the option that we would have in terms of choosing the online, as I said before, uh, realistically, if kids try out in person, and I know this is a slight shift of what I've said in the past, this is the second shift of what I said in the past. The other shift was windows. We are allowing windows to be open. My second point that is uh somewhat different than I've said before is if kids are starting in the online and the hybrid program and um there's a decision made by parents regarding online would be better, I'm asking for conversations at the building level. Uh, there is a strong chance that we would honor that. But in terms of your question, uh, we have to make a decision, so I wish I could give you more time to make the online decision at the start of the year, but we're going to have to go with that. Um, uh, we are recording this, so it's going to be recorded. You can listen to aspects of it that I talked about. It's on our website. And um, as I said at the beginning, those of you with multiple questions, you know, really should take a look at both town halls um and potentially really just uh try to get the best information you can. Uh, I know there's also some parents doing a great job setting up, at least one parent setting up a Facebook account for online learners. I don't have that information in front of me right now, but it's a great act. I applaud that parent and those parents, so there's information out there as well. With cold and, uh, well, actually I'm trying to find out where I left off. All right, uh, is the decision to online versus hybrid still due today? Yes, it has not been changed, but has been changed is the start of school, of the start of the school year, which is Thursday, September 10th. If a parent's keep a child home for cold-like symptoms, not sent home by the nurse, do they have to stay home for 10 days or just until the resolution of symptoms? That's a great question. Um, I can tell you that uh in terms of that, we are going to be communicating with parents who keep their kids home. Uh, and it'd be similar to what would happen if they were in person. My understanding is that our nurse will ask the parents some questions regarding it. Uh, if the nurse feels like those symptoms are s- If the nurse feels like those symptoms are related enough to potential COVID, then they would ask you to take your child to a doctor. They may not, depending on what it is. And at that point, you know, you'd make a decision around bringing your child back to school. That very, very well may recommend a doctor. Once we recommend a doctor, that's where the process starts that we're not allowing your child back until a doctor clears it or there's a negative test for COVID. With cold and flu season coming up and symptoms being the same or very similar, how will classrooms be handled with teachers being out sick and availability of subs? A huge challenge for us. I don't have an easy answer for that. We're working as a leadership staff and as a staff to, and as a, with our union association to really plan that out, to have contingency plan B and C available. It could include some of, some online support from our staff as well, who may be at home. We're not sure if that's going to happen or not, that's, that's just another idea. It could be merging two groups of students that are now a bigger group, but the same course or grade level that are in a much bigger area. If we have that available, could have multiple adults obviously coming in to support and triage that class so that there stay at 11, 12, 13 or 14 students. But we have an adult to watch it with information from the teacher to be able to teach that class. It potentially could mean we have to shut some things down if that happened. Again, that would be our last resort, we'd want to do something safe. We certainly are not going to do anything that's against teachers' contracts or anything like that. But it is a challenge, I'm not going to minimize that challenge regarding that process that we're working on. Have you considered buying all students a Chromebook? Other districts are doing that, yes. I wish we could. Financially, we are not in the position to do that. In fact, we're significantly behind the eight ball financially with technology. I think it's amazing that we have this many Chromebooks. I'm amazed that our director of technology, Mr. Franti, working with others and leadership staff, was able to find 700 and utilize 700 Chromebooks that were about to be surplus because they only had a year's life left on them. That has been a huge positive game changer for us. But right now, we don't have the money to do that. That's got to be part of our strategic planning moving forward though, as we move through the next two, three, four years. And again, that is a connection to that other topic that I haven't been saying much about because of the reopening of school, but it's still on our radar, which is our financial situation and the budget process that we're going to be entering this year. Is it okay to fill out the health temperature report early in the morning? If I end up required to go to my physical work building, I will be leaving before the bus comes? Yes, that's perfectly fine. What grades are children expected to bring Chromebooks back and forth to school if it's our own? Our second graders expected? Yes, at this point, it's for all grades because we're going to be utilizing them in the classroom. Now, there may be some slight adjustments, I don't want to speak for Ms. D'Angelo at the early childhood school. She could have some slight adjustments to that, but at this point, it's a K, pre-K through 12 initiative where we're moving Chromebooks back and forth, even at the second grade level. More information on how transportation will be different sometimes, great point, I don't believe, I can't believe I didn't talk about that, this is why I'm reading questions. So transportation, I did talk a little bit about it, but transportation is going to be sanitized every evening. The buses are going to be sanitized and disinfected every evening and in between runs. Individuals will be required to wear a mask at all times on buses, including the drivers, all times, not to take it off. They will be sitting one child per seat, I know we've got a lot of requests for siblings to sit together. However, we worry that if two or three kids are sitting in a seat, it brings you closer to a child in an opposite aisle seat that might not be part of your family. So it defeats the purpose for some kids, which is why we're having kids seat one in the seat, no more than 25 on a bus. Sanitizing and cleaning, we're not allowed to have hand sanitizers on buses that have greater than 60% alcohol in them. That's a federal, that's a state and federal law. We're going to have sanitizer available for students when they leave the bus and make sure that masks are available for students if they don't have any, so they can wear them on the bus. And, and masks are available for students if for some reason they need it between the bus and school. We will be cleaning our buses significantly, bus drivers will be disinfecting to in between runs. And that's really the concept of a bus run. I will tell you again, you know, students who do not wear masks because they're refusing to wear masks, and this is not a student who is exempt from wearing a mask, a student who's exempt from wearing a mask, we're going to work very collaboratively with that family and how to do the transportation. But students who refuse to wear a mask won't be allowed to be on the bus. They won't be transported on the bus and it, and it's just a safety issue. How do mask breaks work for junior high, high school students who are in classes that do not allow them to be six feet apart? We need to work on that, we need to finalize that, but we certainly got to have those breaks and maybe just separating them more fully around that. Don't forget, the polycarbonate will also help. And, and if we do set, we'd have to figure out a way just to separate people, do the mask break. And again, we're not going to have as frequent mask breaks at the secondary level as we will at the elementary level. Let's see, I'm trying to, hopefully this is live. Let me just lie. Try to get some more questions here, I'm going to keep going. Lot of these are around the virtual learning. I answered many of these. Talked about a schedule, what an actual schedule for Wednesday will look like, again, we're going to talk about that later. Can we reach out to teachers directly if we have a question about classroom supplies? I would actually go to your child's school's website, they should have information on their website regarding supplies. If it's not there, you can certainly call your child's school. I think going to the school, the secretary would probably be able to answer that question. What about orientation for kids with special needs that are transitioning to a new building this year? They needed personal exposure prior to the start. We're teaching, or we're treating those situations on a case by case situation, a case by case basis. That could be the, that could happen. I know our special ed department is working very hard on communicating with parents around that. I am also going to announce that we're going to have a special education town hall most, either next week or the week of September or the following week, which I can't remember what date it is. But in the next two weeks, we're going to have a special education forum. I had a great conversation with some of our leaders in voice as part of the PTSA. That special ed forum will be on specific topics tied to special education. It will be in person, ideally with virtual broadcasting live and which will then be recorded. So we'll have both, in my perfect world, we're going to have it live for people that want to come into our auditorium. And then as well as do that, zoom it, zoom it virtually to parents in the community who sign into it. We're going to try to do that again in the next two weeks, I know that doesn't help for your decision tomorrow. But you know, anything related to students with disabilities, we need to follow the IEP to the best we possibly can. We need to continue with our focus on a least restrictive environment and we got to meet the needs as best we can on an individual basis. So I would encourage you to have conversations with, with the email, your, the director of special education or the assistant director of special education. Certainly you can email your child's principal around some of these questions, but around special ed, but we are going to have more information on our website and we're going to do a special town hall regarding special education. I think I answered most of these and there may be more questions that have come up. So let me just see here. Are are the Chromebooks the school has to distribute to students all the same specific model? If bringing them back and forth to school, I would like to order protective cases to keep them safe and those are model specific. Is that information you could provide? I would answer that as I believe we can provide that information, it's a great point. That's something I'd ask Sherri and Liz to flag for me so that we can get an answer to that. How is drop off and pickup being coordinated? We're going to have that one at six thirty PM, our principals are going to take that because it's a little bit different at the elementary level than the secondary level. So six thirty tonight, and again, if you are not able to watch it live at six thirty, it'll be taped immediately, so you could watch it after seven thirty tonight. I'm hoping to talk more about drop off and pickup, it's not significantly different. But we are extending timeframes for parents to drop kids off, so we're not rushing it as much as a typical year. When will the district make a decision about clubs and extracurricular activities? Many of these groups have deadlines at the first months of school. Love to make a decision on that in the first two weeks of September. Would love to have as many clubs and activities and extracurricular activities going on as possible, but obviously our number one priority is safety. So that decision will hopefully be made in the first two to three weeks at the latest in September. I don't have any more questions at this second. So I'm going to, I'm going to stop it here, it's about 12:21. Appreciate those of you that stayed on for a couple of minutes or stayed on for the whole time, doesn't matter. We know that you have lots of questions, I'm trying to do, or we are trying to do our best at answering those. We're going to be on again at six thirty PM tonight with the principals. Please, if you're able to watch it, then watch it taped if you can. And like I said a few times, we're going to have answers to these questions and comments that I had by Friday that are going to be posted on the website. Again, take care of yourselves and your families. This is a really important time, I know it, I know it's difficult. We'll continue to be as transparent with you as possible. Have a great afternoon and I will talk to you soon, thank you.